Good afternoon. We'll start off tonight with prayer and pledge. I'll do the prayer and the pledge, because I forgot to ask somebody when we was in the band. For those that would like to participate, please do so. Shall we bow our heads? Gracious having, Father, we come to you today asking you to strengthen us so that we make the right decisions that will reflect the city. Father, we ask that you bless and watch over all of our workers and our citizens. These things we ask in mighty name of Jesus.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Present.
Councilmember Oxtash is absent. Councilmember Garcia is absent. Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
Southern members present, two absent.
Okay. Let me do general housekeeping. All councilpersons, please silence your phones and your computers, please. Audience, I ask that you do the same, please. This is a public meeting of city council. We're asked that everyone in attendance, please be on. Please do not be rude or obnoxious. No booing, no clapping. Once again, everyone, will you please silence your devices? Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
We have one this evening. It's the city convenience station will open this Saturday, February 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. That's where city residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb and other miscellaneous bulky items. Our next item is a proclamation recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month.
And the proclamation will be read by Councilman Balls.
Thank you. City of Saginaw proclamation. Where is Black History Month? Were created by Connor G. Woodson, 1926, to highlight the vast endeavors and accomplishments of African-Americans that have impacted our nation's history and identified. And where is, in this national celebration, we applaud the transformation contributions of the African-American community which have overcome tremendous adversity to build lasting change for generations to come. And where is, the city of Saginaw is proud to honor African-Americans who have helped to shape and transform our city, including lumber barons, William Atwood, physicians, Dr. Archer A. Claire, former mayor Andy G. Marsh, educator Ruben Daniels, and former UAW Airport Commissioner Terry Brown, and countless others who contributed and are woven in the fabric of our city. And where is, in our city recognition of Black History Month, we reflect of the great strides that we have made to ensure freedom of all people regardless of race, color, creed, in the pursuit of light, liberty, and happiness, and we recognize that our work must continue. Now, if it be resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month. And the city of Saginaw encourage all residents to honor black history and culture in our city and continue the efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. It is witness here for us, I have in two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed on this fifth day of February in the year of our Lord 2024. Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilpersons, Andy Bench, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Priscilla Garcia, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Oxtash, and Reggie Williams II, and Timothy Morales, the city manager.
Okay. Now, we don't have anybody to accept it, so therefore...
I'll keep it.
As it gets somewhere. Okay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
The purpose of the pub... Oh, I'm sorry. Speakers, you will be called to the podium. You have three minutes in which you need to state what your interest is. This is not a question or answer period, so therefore you will not get an answer. You should not direct any of your questions to just an individual council member. Once again, we ask that you not be rude and obnoxious, and I know crowd, we can get excited because somebody will say something we like and we want to applause, but that's inappropriate. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Steve Meyer.
Hi, Steve Meyer, representing the YMCA of Saginaw. Mayor Moore, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. There's some rule about primacy and recency, so I look back at my notes and recognize I was here with you in December of 2021, maybe one of the first, and today I recognize as maybe one of the last. So, thank you for this opportunity. Like we heard Mayor talking about last week, let me tell you about some things that have happened lately. So, no different at the Y, we'd like to catch you up on some things that have happened lately since December of 2021. Well, we're still a charitable, nonprofit organization, and like others, we have weathered and we are weathering business, operational, and financial challenges. We continue to deliver on our mission even in those difficult times, providing for needs of our community members. We continue business recovery, including membership growth, program growth, and partner growth. Our membership is up to 5,400 now as of this week. We have a new YMCA board-approved strategic plan. It's in your packets, in fact, and we have completed and surpassed our 155th year of continuous service to our Saginaw community and our region. We have been vetted by Guide House. I know that means something to you. And we were allocated $125,000 from the county specific to expanding our Mission Nutrition Food Assistance Program, our feeding program. We continue to build capacity, but we are also ready to do more. So, our request to the city for ARPA support going back to 2021 was not met. We were not notified of any specific reasons why, other than there were more requests than there was funding available. So, in the event that any circumstances or opportunities have changed, we would like to request that our proposal be revisited. We have the longevity at the Y, the longevity, the integrity, the capacity in the programs to deliver meaningful change. And so, we ask that you look at our proposal. We've pared it down. It's very specific now to youth development programs and infrastructure that would support our youth development programs, like childcare, an obesity initiative, safety around water, and youth membership and partner access. And that's a... I've done it in record time, and I would like to take your questions if the mayor would allow any.
No, sir, you can't ask any questions. This is not question or answer.
Can't ask questions of me.
They can't. Any council member that needs to know something outside of him at the podium, see him after the meeting or go by the Y.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Robert Delgado. On to Lisa Purchase Kelly.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, thanks for having me. I'm Lisa Purchase Kelly, here from Major Courts for Minors. And you have in front of you an ARPA funding request for Major Courts for Minors. Some of you may have already seen this request or a version of it. We applied for ARPA funding back in the beginning, a year and a half ago, and in the meantime, our goals and needs have shifted somewhat, so I have wanted to come and present an updated version of what we are hoping to do. On the first page of what you have in front of you is things you already know about Major Courts for Minors. I was just here a couple months ago with our young student Jamal Robbins and his mother, and they talked about the effectiveness and the importance of the program. The part I want to emphasize is our resiliency and determination in our 13 years of operation, and that an investment in Major Courts for Minors is a good investment. We are here to stay, and we are seeking to serve our community for years to come. We have added... We have ended 2023 in a better position financially than we have at any time since the pandemic. And because of that, we're now in a position to take this program from merely surviving to thriving, and any funding from ARPA funds would be a giant step towards that. Because of the nature of what we do, operations is always the bulk of our budget, and that was what our initial proposal was for. As we reach a more reliable level of funding, we'll add more instructors to the payroll, which will help us serve more kids. And as we add more students, our per-student costs go down as our other costs remain the same. So, more instructors on the payroll mean better effectiveness and efficiency for our program. This is one of our goals this year. Our other goal is to become more self-sufficient and self-sustaining in our funding efforts, to have less reliance on just small local grants, and to achieve fundraising events on our own. Purchasing a building at a modest cost would help us achieve those goals and would allow us to direct more of our own funding towards operations. So, whether ARPA funds are looking to go towards operations or towards capital expenses, we have a list in front of you of capital expenses, or operations could be funded, either one helps tremendously and helps us achieve our goals of serving more Saginaw students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph Martin.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, Mr. Tim Morales, and the city of Saginaw, I am Ralph Martin on Level 12, 15 Carroll Street, here in the wonderful city of Saginaw, Michigan. And I am here on behalf as president of the Saginaw African Cultural Festival, the longest-running festival in the United States of America, 56 years in counting of a safe environment, and one of the most interval three-day weekends that this city has, where over 2,000, I'll say 2,100 people came through our welcome tent, our welcome tent, which is only one entrance each day. And just engaged in such a wonderful opportunity to see culture, food, entertainment, and just getting along, having a good time in a safe environment. And we continue to do this. We take pride of ourselves, of how we take care of our business. I have great accountability in our finance department as we make sure we have an audit every year. We make sure that we are very good students, student stewards with our finances, and we look forward to if we can get some assistance as far as the ARPA funds are dispersed. It would really help us a lot. There are some things that we would do as far as making sure that we are ADA compliant. We would hate to see someone that would like to be on our stage and perform, or even be an emcee, and we can't get them on because of the lack of a ramp or something like that. We have other opportunities that we can just build and grow and make that festival even more stretched out on all that land that we have out there. And we have some ideas that's coming up that would make that an even bigger event than it is right now. So, we would really, really like the consideration. We appreciate the consideration for the ARPA funds to help us to be able to sustain other tents and stages, and we're looking to get golf carts and mobile chairs and AED machines and things of that nature, just for the safety, first of all, for our community, and so that everyone will have access to such a great event. So, we would just like to make sure that we are out there and in your minds and in your thoughts, and if you have any questions, you can always get in contact with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Crystal Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city manager, and members of the council. Good evening. I am here tonight on behalf of women of colors. I have been a part of Women of Colors since 2015, and I am so proud to say that before it really became the buzzword, diversity, equity, and inclusion, is what Women of Colors has been about since it started over 30 years ago. Women of Colors was formed and started to bring individuals together from across our community to address issues that impact everyone. The other key buzzwords that we're hearing today is there's so much going on right now across our community, our state, and our country in the way of substance abuse and misuse, and it knows no boundaries of any kind. And Women of Colors has been participating in and propagating a wonderful prevention education program that is now in our juvenile detention center. It is in... And what's so cool is it's children and adults. We are in TRICAP. We work with other agencies. You know, this is an issue that's taking lives, probably as much or more anymore than guns. This is something that needs to be addressed, and we need to reach our young people, because key questions that we ask with the prevention education is what if? If you make this choice, what's going to happen? If you take a hit of this, or a drag of that, or a sip of this, or a sip of that, do you know that you're not going to become addicted? Do you know that it only takes one time? Do you know? Those type of questions, you know, if you do, if you do this, that, or the other, what are the ramifications going to be? So, we try to reach young people. And the other wonderful feature about Women of Colors is the collaboration. We just had a wonderful youth event in which we brought a number of speakers together and talked to a number of different students, but we also partnered with many other organizations. And that's what we're all about. We don't need to just have Women of Colors on the flyer. We don't need to have just Women of Colors, you know, promoting an event or something like that. We know it takes a village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pam Ross McLean.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Moore, city councilmembers, city manager. I'm normally not nervous when I get up to talk, but I'm a little bit nervous, only because I'm here to talk on behalf of Women of Colors. I am the chief officer of culture belonging and community building for Delta College, which is a new position that I'm very excited to occupy. It is a position that allows me to build strategic partnerships between Delta College and what we call educational partners, people who really want to build partnerships that are reciprocal, that are helping to make our community a better place. So, when I met Evelyn McGovern, I tried to get her to tell me what Women of Colors was about, give me a sense of what the mission of the organization is. And I left some handouts with you because it tells the exhaustive list of things that Women of Colors has come to specialize in. But what Evelyn said to me was, you can't just put us in a box, right? And I've come to understand that. It's like asking a mother, what do you do, Mom, to be a good mother? Women of Colors is a diverse group of women who truly are nimble enough to be responsive to the needs of our community. I was brought into Women of Colors to work on a community-based participatory research project that was funded by the Michigan Health Endowment Fund. And I will tell you, we did some really good work together. We honored the voices of the people in the community. We empowered them to see themselves as researchers, because we don't need researchers coming in from the outside telling us how to solve the problems in our community. I am a researcher, and I learned from doing this process, how to share power, how to make decisions together. And we are now in the second phase of work where the Michigan Health Endowment Fund has entrusted us to do something, not just talk about what we learned, but to do something. And we will be entering into a second phase of research where we will be embedding cultural informants, people in recovery, in emergency rooms using a model called Project Assert, so that they can help deal with some of the barriers that exist in hospitals that have people not wanting to go get back and get care when they're not treated with respect and dignity. We don't know what we know until we know how to do better, and we have to do a better job of asking critical informants to help us make our systems better, fair, more just for everyone. Women of Colors is a group that is well poised to do that, and they are most deserving of a home in this community where we can continue the great work that has been going on for over three decades of service. So, your support of this ongoing work would be a great investment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is M.T. Thompson, Jr.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
When people greet each other in this country, they say, how are you? In parts of Africa, when they greet each other, they say, how are the children? And today, that's the question I want you to think about, how are the children? I'm going to read our press release that was released today, and then if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. The Honorable M.T. Thompson, Jr., and Cooley Law School Professor Monica Knuckles announced the release of their revised drug education and crime prevention program called Making Choices and Facing Consequences. It consists of four volumes, Weapons in School, Drugs and Alcohol, Who Can Stop the Bullying, and Gangs in the Hood. Thompson and Knuckles say they are tired of the deafening echo of gunfire in the community they grew up in, the weeping and crying of mothers, and one funeral procession after another. Professor Knuckles states, we cannot afford to normalize the persistent crisis of gun violence and drug overdoses. Swift and immediate action is needed. Gun violence is the number-one threat to our children. It kills more children than COVID, the flu, and RSV combined. According to the Children Defense Fund's 2023 report entitled, The State of America's Children's 2023, gun violence is the number-one cause of death for children aged 1 to 19. The death rate increased by 40% from 2017 and 2021 and is still increasing. In 2021, we lost 13 children a day, the highest number ever recorded. Black children are dying at a faster rate. During the period of 2017 to 2021, black children and teens were six times as likely to die from gun violence as their white peers. In 2021, the gun-related death rate for white children was 3.3 per 100,000. For black children, it was 20.5 per 100,000 children. The majority were black boys. From 2020, 200 to 2020, black youth from 10 to 19 years old experienced a 78% increase in suicide. Black children 5 to 12 years old are twice as likely to commit suicides as their white peers. Teen suicides are growing at an alarming rate. Researchers attribute this to adverse living conditions. As I close out, you have a copy that talks about the opioid epidemic. You know, last week, Oregon declared a statewide disaster as a result of fentanyl. We also have a drug education program. It's been field-tested, certified, it's been recommended and approved by the Police Association, several superintendents, the state of Michigan, Michigan State, Delta College, Oakland University, the pre-test, post-test.
You gotta wrap it up, sir.
Said that it works, and we hope you'll take a hard look at it. So, I ask you, as I go back to my seat, how are the children?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Before I do that, I'm gonna flip the script. I'd like to acknowledge that we have Commissioner Tanny from Saginaw County Commissioners in the House. Okay. We will start tonight with Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to our public speakers for coming out and everyone else that's in the audience. I just want to say that I had an opportunity to go visit Stars, and I was very impressed, and I'm very excited about what they're doing. And from that visit, I want to put out that they are... They're hiring a diesel mechanic, a garage technician. They also have CLD training, and they have a wonderful benefits package, which I won't go over, but the biggest thing on here, they have a pension system. And I can tell you, if you're out there, I love my pension, and it's something you should definitely go for. But I really want to promote Stars because of the fact that if you're out there and you have issues with transportation, whether you're healthy, handicapped, or whatnot, they have everything set up to where they can assist our citizens here in the city. So, that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out speaking this evening. It seemed like everybody that spoke had something to say or something that correlated with how the children are doing in the city of Saginaw. And it bothers me, too. That's why I've been in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30-some years, been involved in other mentoring programs, too, because I know that if we don't raise good children, we definitely won't have good adults. And sometime I think about, what could somebody say to make people stop doing violence? I mean, we tried to legislate it. We sent people to church. We sent them to prison, and things keep happening. So, I wonder, what can we do? I always think about that. And the only thing that keeps coming to my mind is that we must engage these kids where they are. We've got to engage them. I mean, it's easy for people to say, that guy did this, that guy did that, he's a bad little boy. Who talks to that bad little boy? When we know they're more than likely his father is locked up or either dead because of drugs. You know, and it bothers me so much. Sometime I toss and turn at night about it because it bothers me, because our community is not where it should be. You know, when people talk about Saginaw being a nasty place and stuff like that, that bothers me. That's why I'm involved in the city council and other things. See, Mr. Tanny back there, we participated in an event for a drug court last week where people graduated from drug court, and they have, instead of locking them up, they had the opportunity to go to classes, drug classes, and they have monitors. Not only do the probation people monitor them, but they have drug counselors that monitor them, too. And most of the people graduate from their program, they go on to be productive members of society, working, taking care of their families. But I think as human beings, God, people, Christians, or Muslims, or whatever, I think all the holy books say about what are we doing for our community and our kids and for those that have less than. And I think I implore all of us to get involved in kids' life and try our best to help them out, because if we don't, I heard it before, that those chickens are going to come home to roost, and they may not be roosting where you want them to roost at. I would hate for something to happen to somebody coming out of the city hall for work, or something of that nature, or people that have other jobs, or people get harmed because of drugs, people want their money and stuff like that. You know, we got a problem with people that's lacking hope, and the ones that lack hope end up doing dope. So, we got a circle jerk going around here where people that ain't got no jobs trying to sell the dope, and the people that ain't got no hope trying to use the dope. So, some kind of way, we need to be involved in our people a lot more better than we doing. I thank God for allowing me to be involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program, other mentoring programs, but I think I implore everybody else to please get in child and a kid's life. I guarantee you can turn them around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. To my colleagues that are not here and that are ill, I wish that you a good recovery, speed of recovery. We miss you. For being nervous when you get up onto the podium, I took a S V S U class about how that's actually designed. We're actually on a dais, and we're elevated above everyone else, and it's something about wood panels and authority. So, there's no need to be nervous. You guys sent us here, but I also understand where that comes from. For Black History Month, you know, happy Black History Month to everybody. A couple years ago, I had said, you know, certain things about every individual on here. Two years later, those things hold true. You know, Councilman Williams is still a person of great integrity and truth, always speaking truth. Councilman Balls is always somebody that's... Councilman Balls is always somebody that's looking to see how they can better the community. Councilman Copeland is a great father and a person of great intelligence, and the mayor is the same, and she did a great job at the state of the city. I'm honored to be here with folks that are serving the city like they are. With the homicide rate, I wanted to kind of take a moment, I was gonna highlight this last time. The homicide rate's down in the city of Saginaw, the shootings are up. So, you know, first, we have to recognize the jobs that the first responders have done, the health care services done, to make sure that the shootings that had happened did not result in homicides, but also, we do have a serious problem with gun violence in the city. So, thank you for bringing that up as well, and we'll definitely take a look at that. And then, also, thank you to the mayor again for doing a great job at the state of the city, a very positive outlook on what we can achieve here in the city of Saginaw. And then, last, if anybody has any information on the murders of Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Rudisson, Jonathan Lamar Van, please call 1-800-422-5245. That's Crime Stoppers. Again, 1-800-422-5245. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, citizens of the city of Saginaw. Thank you to our public speakers who shared this evening on all of the things that we heard this evening. I do want to say, happy Black History Month, and I just want to share this evening this quote that's really been something that I've been thinking about as we have a lot of things that are going on. This is an election year. Some people are experiencing some of the hardest things of their life, a lot of frustration. And this quote says, "With our future ahead of us and the ancestors beside us, there's nothing we can't do." And I think about the state of the city and the state of the county, and, you know, we hear about the ramifications of COVID and various things like that, but we get a chance to see how our community is yet thriving. We hear about organizations who have been here consistently for over 30 years or 90 years, and so, that just speaks to the city of Saginaw. There's nothing we can't do. As we continue to come together, work in unity, work in love, we may not always agree. Uniformity does not mean unity, and that is one of the things that I want to continue to work towards. So, as you go out this week, remember, there's nothing you can't do. May seem hard, it may get challenging, but remember, there's nothing we as a community can't do, and you as a thriving citizen of the city of Saginaw, you got it. That's all. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it again. She wasn't gonna say nothing. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Tried to to my head again.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of you all that came to city council today to see your city council at work. I'd like to say thank you to the speakers. Just a few things, I hope I can get through them all. I'd like to say that I was blessed to be at the Youth Explosion this past week. It was awesome by Women of Colors, but what got me so, I don't know where, we'll say that later, but I appreciate the collaborative effort, and that goes a long way with me all the time. And it was a collaborative effort with Women of Colors, Neighborhood House, CAC, and First World Community Center. And one of their, they had several speakers, but one of their main speakers was one of our own, Algie Smith. And it was just awesome to see the young people engage and the questions they asked, and it was just awesome. You had to be there. I don't know if it was recorded or not, but it was awesome. You need to really see it because we need to invest in our children. I don't care what we do, don't do, think about doing, wanna do, we need to invest in the future of our young people. And I also want to say happy Black History Month. Also, this is Heart Awareness Month, so please check your heart, please. You just never know. I lost my brother, my mother, and my sister to some sort of heart disease, so you want to be careful. And my sister was only 42 at the time, so we want to be very vigilant in that. So, this is also that month. I also like to say openly condolences to the family of Officer Pop that was lost to the community, such a fine gentleman. And his attitude and his spirit went a long way in the city of Saginaw with many people and crossed many lines, you know, diversity. I can say that. So, I think that's it. I don't want to forget anything. Oh, Memorial Cup, we have applications. I have a few, but you can also come here. The Memorial Cup is offering up to $5,000 for some small businesses. In case you want to be involved, just call the city, and I do have a couple of applications. We want everyone to be a part of the Memorial Cup. So, thank you very much, and that's from the SEDC. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much to our public speakers for all that you do and your continued advocacy, excuse me, for your people that you serve. I would also like to wish everyone a happy Black History Month. During the holidays, we always encourage people to shop locally and think about small businesses here in Saginaw, but during Black History Month, we have so many talented entrepreneurs in the black community, we have so many small businesses that are owned and operated particularly by black women, and I would just really encourage everyone to celebrate the month in many different ways, but one of the best ways you can celebrate the month is by spending your hard-earned dollars on local services provided to you right here in Saginaw. So, and I also wanted to extend my condolences to the family of Mr. Reginald Cameron. He worked at Saginaw High. I know that he had a major impact and influence on my two children, and they were very heartbroken to hear of his loss, and I just want to extend my condolences to everyone who knew him and had the pleasure of being around his bright spirit. And I want to add that I'm very sorry I was not being able to be at the State of the City speech or meeting this year. I was sick, and I had to stay home for a few days and hide out, but I did watch it live, and our mayor did a wonderful job, as she always does, but she made us look good, and she made us proud, and I'm very happy to get to hear her share the good news of what's going on in Saginaw and do it with the unique enthusiasm that only Mayor Moore has. Play the music, and she will dance her way to the podium and across the stage. So, I'm very lucky to have her as our spokesperson, and it was just really wonderful to hear her talk about all the wonderful things that we do have going on here in Saginaw right now, despite all of the challenges that we may have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, it is me. First, I'd like to thank all of our public speakers. We hear you. We hear you, and we plan to do all that we can to get this right so that we can continue to build. First, I'd like to thank three people who put up with me for a week and a half. That's Vicky, Rachel, and Matt. Even though we practiced day in and day out, I still didn't do it the way they wanted me to. I did give out the statistics, and that was the important part, but at the end, you know I had to say, "Now, I'm talking." Understand me. I don't know, I hope I'm speaking for the whole entire council. We love this city. We love it, and we're gonna do everything in our power, within our power, key word, that we can do to help strengthen it. I said in my speech, "Let's stop complaining. Give us some solutions. If you've got some ideas, give us some." Once we begin to start talking, I know youth is a hard thing, but youth is a hard thing across the board. We have to get prepared, y'all. We've got to get prepared. We've got to start believing in one another and trusting each other. This city was not built on hatred. This city was built on love. Once again, I encourage all of us, even if you don't like them, if you say you love them long enough, my mom said, "You give a dog a bone long enough, you'll love him." Same thing with us. If you tell us you love me long enough, I believe it and I feel it. My council persons, I thank you so much for your trusting in me to be able to do the State of the City address. Yes, I always act a nut. Don't put no music on. You don't want me to dance? Don't put no music on. It'll just be in my head, and I can just bounce, but if you put the music on, I'm going down, going down. So, public speakers, we urge you, and we plan to do the best we can with what we got to work with. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do want to also congratulate her on her State of the City. It's a week and a half you're practicing. It seems like it's longer than that, but there are a lot of, they're in here for an hour at a time or more.
You don't have to tell nobody. You ain't got to tell nobody.
But it is, it's an effort by everybody. I think Vicky starts working on that after the first of the year and gathers all the data from the department heads, so thank you to the mayor for the great job she did and the Vicky, Matt, and Rachel that the mayor mentioned, and also, all the staff that compiles all the data and does all the work throughout the year. Great job by everybody. And a couple of updates on some projects we've been working on. So, the staff in inspections and development are working on the demolition of the buildings at the fairgrounds, so that should be progressing based upon the schedule we provide it to you. And one thing I want to ask council to think about is, we have our outline for the demolition in the project and the cleanup of the property, so it would be development-ready. That will still be in the hands of the Saginaw Housing Commission to determine how they move forward with that. They still have some work to do, I think, with HUD. One thing to think about is that fairgrounds gate. We met with Congressman Kildee, it's probably been eight years or more ago now, but there is a desire by the Saginaw County Historical Society to gain ownership of that gate. We worked with the Housing Commission, so that is a separate piece of property. It's a separate parcel now. So, I encourage you all to think about the possibility of taking ownership of that and maybe having the Historical Society adopt that as a park. It would be a great entry gate for that into the city and great for the neighborhood to have that standing there. It's a historical marker, and you can talk to Tom Mudd if you want to know more about it, but I think it's one of the only gates in the state of Michigan that is a designated historical landmark, so that's something that's worth preserving and I think would mean a lot to that area. So, think about that, if you will, as we progress with this. We did also meet with the group that council approved the contract with, with the state money for the Medical Diamond project. So, if you recall from that, they are also subcontracting, it's Studio Gang, and they're subcontracting with SCAPE. So, I'm really encouraged about one part of the project that they're looking at, and that is the Riverfront Park. They talked a lot about engaging the community with the parkland, and if you go to their website, the Studio Gang website, they have a Riverfront Park in Memphis, Tennessee that is awesome. It was similar to, what they talked about is, you can have property there and call it a park, but if there aren't things to engage people, it's not going to be used. So, I think it'll be very encouraging to see what their plan is and what they can come up with to improve that area and make it something that everybody wants to use. And finally, I know several council members and I and some community members met with Barry Ontario quite some time ago, so we've been waiting for them to get back with us. They are, have met with their Sister City Committee and their Economic Development people, and we are going to be setting up a second meeting with them. So, the council members that were involved in that, you should be getting notification and be a chance for us to interact with their committee and also some of their Economic Development people and see what next steps we have for that. So, that should be coming up soon. Again, that's being coordinated by SVSU, so they're putting that meeting together. That concludes management update.
Any questions to the city manager? I have one. The front gate, I thought we decided, oh, we didn't. Tom Mudd, is that his name? Tom Mudd, I remember he came in front of us, and he wanted to take over that to turn it into what you're talking about, so we never voted on it?
No, no, the Housing Commission still owns that property, so I think that the idea is to either get it into ownership of the Historical Society or the city and then have an agreement with them to take care of it. I think they do, they have expressed that they can fundraise for the repairs on that and get it back into the shape that it needs to be in. It needs a new roof primarily as a first step.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and support. Do I have any exceptions?
Yes, ma'am, eight and nine.
Do I have any? Yes.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. So, it's seven, eight, nine, right? Do we have any more? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number seven is the ratification of a purchase with diesel truck sales for $12,081 for repairs to a 2008 Sterling claw truck for the Public Services Department Streets Division. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. Really, it's just to get some clarification because I was looking at how old that particular piece of equipment is, and I was looking at the $12,000, over 12, a little over 12, and I would, I'd like to know, what is the cost of a new one? Would it make sense to get a new one as opposed to putting monies into a piece of equipment that's over 16 years old?
Yeah, I think actually, we're in the process, I think it would have been probably about a year ago, we put in a request for a purchase to get another claw truck. Unfortunately, right now, you got like an 18-to-36-month delivery time on a new vehicle, and we have to be able to remove our trees and cut our trees now, and we've been looking into whether or not we could rent. You know, there are some companies out there that rent, but we haven't been successful in finding one for that, and we have to continue the service of tree removal, and that's trucks highly used in the Streets Division for that. So, when we do go to get another one to replace it, I think the investment to get it back to operating, too, would be some of that majority that will be recouped back through the value of that vehicle upon being repaired, too.
So, you're already in the process of getting another one, is just?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So, then, would you all have two?
We have two now, one's down, so, yep, we always want to keep two.
Okay, okay. Thank you so very much.
So, we'd be looking to replace that '08.
Okay, thank you so much. Motion to accept number seven.
Support.
It's been moved to second. Can we wait and vote after eight and nine? Or do we need to do it each one?
You need to do them individually. Take your vote on seven, and then we'll go to eight.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number eight is to approve the increase to the contract with L.A. Construction Corporation by $140,851 for a new total of $786,484 for the Meredith Street Reconstruction Project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was Councilmember Balls.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm concerned about the increases, you know, on jobs like this, you know, this is 25% increase on that particular job. I mean, what did we not know why they had to go up so high? I mean...
Well, you know, we got an old city, we got an old system. We do our best with our records to define, you know, where utilities are. When you go to do a reconstruction, you got gas, you got sewer, you got water mains. In this particular instance, we did do cores typically before we do a reconstruction or pavement removal. We'll take cores so we know what different layers of pavement we're dealing with. we'll take cores so we know what different layers of pavement we're dealing with, but it doesn't pick up everything. So, and we had shallow water main in this area, I mean, the utilities were so tight with the sewers and all that in this area over there by the, by the ambulatory, it was just, the water main was showing at five or six feet, but there was an area where it had to come up over a sewer and then we had a couple foot of cover on it, so we didn't know that, 'cause when you take depths on your valves and that, we're hitting, you know, we're showing five and six feet, we had an area here where this water main came up a lot shallower than what we could even anticipate it, so we had to get it out of our way in order to put the pavement back down and get it down in accordance with AWWA standards of the depth, so. And it's not real common that we typically see, we're always coming within, you know, sometimes we're under what the low bid was, if we can, you know, the unfortunate, in this situation, we ran into some unforeseen's that we weren't able to work around, and in order to get the project completed, we had to do a change order with the contractor to get that water main lowered so we could finish the project, so.
I'm just saying, I'm concerned, you know what I'm saying, it's not the first time I seen where bidders come back. You know, one guy come in, he bid, say, friends, he bid $7 million to do all the water lines. And then, I'm just saying, hypothetical talking. And then we come back and say, well, the guy that bided $7 million can't do the job for that amount, and then we give somebody else the job for half of the amount, I mean, for the, give them half of the amount for the whole job, you know, and we keep coming back doing this, so I just, hopefully we just start doing a little more due diligence because it just don't look right, you know what I'm saying?
No, I don't, actually, actually, I don't know what you're saying, so I apologize for that.
What I'm saying is.
We do do our vetting and our due diligence, first of all, you have to be qualified before you can do a project. This contractor was qualified, he was the low bidder, we issued him a contract. We ran into an unforeseen circumstance in the field, he's the low bid, highly qualified contractor in the field. He did this work at bid prices, it was additional quantity to the bid price.
Do they go out and do the inspection too? To see the contractor, do they?
No, 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 we, we inspect the contractor's work.
No, do they go out and check to see if, if that's, if that's the best way to do it? Do they go out and look at, to see if there's any unforeseen stuff that's out there, would they be running to?
Oh, we do all that as we bid it, after we bid it, and then our engineering division goes out and does the construction inspection, and they're the ones that recommend this type of work to get these utilities out of our way to finish that project.
They would bid it based upon what we provide, so they, they don't go out, they don't all go out and inspect the site before they bid, they're bidding based upon what we provide them.
What we provide them, exactly right, if that's what you're saying.
I'm concerned, you know what I'm saying, okay. All right, I just wanted, want an explanation on why it was so much more and, you know, and if there's a way that we can stop this from happening, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I could tell you, it's, every project, you can't, I mean, this stuff's hundred, hundred, and we do our best through our utility drawings and going in and doing our inspections and surveying, you know, to, to do our best to have that there, but in an old city like this, you're gonna always run into something.
Yes.
You have to have a motion.
You have a motion, oh. I make a motion to approve. Number eight.
Second.
It's been moved as second.
Can we go into discussion?
Yes, let's go into discussion.
Okay, I greatly appreciate the dialogue you two had, but it went over my head, some of the codes that you were using. So, I just, on a second grade level.
Yep.
You all worked on the project, came against and saw that there was some additional piping that you all had to move. Due to you all having to move that, you all have to now pay for that.
Yes.
And that's just all this is?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, and you can't, you can't stop the project for two, three months to get this all put together and get the pre-approval to council prior to getting the work, 'cause you know, this was the last summer. But now that it came in over the, I think we're allotted 20% for contracts, which 20% of the original 600 would've been 120,000, we wouldn't have had to come back, per our purchasing ordinance, is we have up, we can go up to over 20% of a contract. This went over that, hence we had to bring it back in front of council.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. With the information that you're citing before, there was an unforeseen issue, and you say kinda old city, is the data just old, is it just stuff that you're looking at from 1980s or?
No, what I'm getting at is this, and I don't know the data that's probably being put in, but normally when you put in a water main, you've got a valve on a water main, AWWA says you have to have five foot of cover. So, we can literally remove the cap on a valve, shoot the top of the nut on that valve and know the depth of that main actually, and then, you know, most assumptions are it's a straight line, you can't shoot it wherever you don't have a valve. But in this situation, sometimes your water mains, you know, if it's five feet here, you call another valve, but it was shallower in an area to where we couldn't get our, our, our other utilities over it, so we had to lower it down to get it out of our way. But we do have as-built drawings from 80, 100, we have drawings that show everything, our engineers look at it, we put our utilities, Consumers Energy Gas, Ameritech Fiber, I mean, you have so many utilities in here, it was just, and that was one of our older sections of street, you know, over at Meredith from, so it was just an unforeseen, but that isn't, that isn't like it's common in all, but in this short little block of street, we did have that situation. But before we bid anything, we do all our due diligence to make sure that our plans are as accurate as possible.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda asking, with the stuff and due diligence that you're looking at, was that information that you'd been given?
No, no, if we would've known that, we would've had this water, we would've still had it in the drawing, but we would've had planned for it, so the costs would've still came, they just would've been upfront as part of the bid. When we ran into it as part of the construction, we had to then add it back in, but it isn't like it, wouldn't have came along as an increase in cost, it just came along later 'cause we didn't have it in as part of the original design. But you would've seen, you would've seen a similar cost had we had known it was gonna be a conflict, and we would've put it in the plans to replace 300 foot, 400 foot of 12 and 24 inch water main. It's just they would've bid it in the, in the project, we didn't, we didn't realize we were gonna have to relocate it until we started excavating.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number nine is approving the increase to the contract with Rhodey Brothers Excavating Inc. by $300,000 for a new total of $938,891 for the Symphony Lane reconstruction project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was also Councilmember Balls.
Thank you. On this one right here, they see they talking about taking out some fencing and putting in some new sidewalks, and this is 48% more than the other bid, so they didn't see that, they didn't see the fencing out there?
No, so this was addition, so we've been working with the Visitors Convention Bureau and a large group with the Memorial Cup to get some of these projects done before we bring in all these people from all over the country to watch hockey, so we've been, the, the original price you've seen here was to reconstruct Symphony Lane, but in the meantime, we've been working with the state of Michigan and the Visitors Convention Bureau, and you're gonna see there's a council communication in here, number 10, that's gonna talk about the money, the additional money coming in to help pay for this project. So, we do have a million dollar grant, but what we're adding is, we had the Henry Marsh mural, we've been working with the state to try to get them to allow us to add some underbridge lighting to the mural, and also remove one of the sidewalks that's right behind the back of the curb on the, be the West Lane of that to behind the piers, so, but we didn't have any and all of them approvals, this project's coming up so fast, we had to start the work on Symphony Lane before we could even add the underbridge lighting. So, this is additional work items that may or may not have been able to be part, to get done before the Memorial Cup. We just now got our approvals, we got prices on the, the underbridge lighting, and this is gonna just add this work to them with bid items at Rhodey Brothers, who's already out there doing the work to do. So, this wasn't like we knew we were gonna be able to do that before we bid it, and time is of the essence, so we're just trying to get the most of the work that we can done in that area to beautify and enhance it before all these people come from all over.
So, this part of the job wasn't really out for bid? So, we just gonna give it to them for $300,000, how, how do we know that we can get it done for cheaper if we just throw it back out there?
Well, because, we, we, the engineering division did our own vetting on the lighting system we're gonna use, so we, we know the price of that, the type of Cree lighting we're gonna use to put up, and they had already had bid items in their project for running conduit and electrical, 'cause there's electrical and that on their job, so they're just continuing, they're saying, so the, so the lighting package is a certain cost, and then per their bid items, per foot of pipe and all that to run the wiring and all that is already in their contract, so they're just adding additional quantity to their bid to cover the installation of the lights.
It throws up a red flag with me, you know what I'm saying, when you're throwing the bid in, $300,000 more, nobody else bid it on it before, you know, on that particular part of the job, it just throws up something in my mind, you know, what the hell's going on, you know, these guys are.
I'd be willing any day for any council members to come in and go through every one of these with a, with a fine tooth comb. Trust me, that's what you, that's what we do, and I've been doing for 28 years, and I was making sure we're getting the best value for the best price.
I hope so, I hope so, if not, you can come in and, and let us drill you a little bit more. But then maybe, it'd, it'd be different next time, I don't know.
But I'm serious on that, honestly.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the city's money, taxpayers' money, that's all, thank you. I'd like to make, anybody else got any questions?
You're gonna make the motion first.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve number nine.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Yes.
This project is being paid by the state of Michigan.
So, not in its entirety.
Okay.
So, what's gonna happen on the next CC is in the full amount of a million dollars, but the understanding is that 750,000 of that is gonna be going towards this project, you know, which, and then the other remaining 250 is gonna be used by the Visitors and Convention Bureau through an agreement that I think might either be here on the next meeting to, to pay them for some other stuff that's going on as part of the, 'cause they were one of the big ones that worked towards getting this grant for us, so. Towards some of the other stuff that's happening as part of the mural and all that.
The mural looks good, though.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, what I'm wondering, when the amount goes up for the, does that kinda put in any kinda controversy in regards to the other bidders that may have bided close to this, or?
No, once you get, once you get a bidder, a, a low bid, and you know they got, you got quantities on their bids, and these are just in some of the additional, additional quantity to that bid, it's still the same low bid, it's just additional quantities to their bid amount. And I don't have the bid tab in front of me from when we bid Symphony Lane, but I think that Rhodey Brothers was substantially lower than the second bid too, so.
Okay.
And they're already mobilized and have the equipment on site, and, you know, so it's, they're there doing the work, so they do have a benefit of not having additional mobilization cost for another contractor to move a bunch of equipment and everything and to continue this work.
All right, thank you very much.
One more question.
Yes.
Do, do these contractors come in the city, do this work, are they obligated to hire anybody living in the city? Do we ask them to hire anybody?
No, they just gotta be, there's a certain, some jobs have a, if it's state or federally funded, you gotta pay Davis Bacon wages and all that, but we can't dictate to them where they hire their workers. That's, that's not, I mean, it's not in the city purchasing requirement that I know of, or it's not in any federal or state documents that we work off of. I mean, there's certain projects require a certain DBE disadvantaged business enterprise, you know, they, they come up with a certain 5% or 10% of it has to be there, but it doesn't say they have to be, they have to be residents of the city of Saginaw or.
There is some language in there to say?
No.
None at all to say they have to hire anybody, 5%, even if it comes from the federal government?
Not from the city, but they gotta hire a certain amount, it has to be their female owned or minority, you know, DBE disadvantaged business, which can be female owned or Hispanic, you know.
Well, we know Rhodey Brothers ain't Hispanic or any of that.
Well, I'm saying this was a city bid though, so we don't have those same requirements on our bids that the federal and state government do.
Even if we use their funds, state funds, they be using state funds or federal funds for this project?
Certain funds, this state grant don't require that.
I'm concerned, man, I mean, it sure would be nice to see some people that look like the city working on some of these jobs, man, it's despairingly hurtful when I see that when people working in the city, they don't look like the city, that bothers me, it bothers me. I mean, do anybody have any sympathy or apathy when it come to this stuff? Everybody say, oh, yeah, have a little sympathy, but nobody have no empathy, don't nobody feel it when we don't have our stores open or, or, or young people don't see their fathers going to work and stuff like that, you know, because they sitting at home, it's somebody else coming in here getting our money and going back out. It, it bothers me, so, I just wish there's some type of way we can change the law, we need to legislate something to make it so our people in our city can be working, getting the money, so. That's my feelings on that.
Anyone else? Yes.
No, no question, just a comment, nice job.
Yes, Councilwoman.
But now that Councilman Balls had mentioned that, I remember that our city manager said something about, and this may be different, I may have that, that you don't have to do it like that, but if there's incentives or something like that?
Yeah, if you're a city business, you, you have a preference, so you get, what is it, 5%? You can be, you can be a higher, that's 5%. So, you can be, you don't have to be the low bidder if you're a city business, but you still have to match the low bid. You can, you can be awarded the bid if you're in a city business and not the low bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to Board, Commission and Committee reports.
Do we have any reports? From any, from any board or commission, do we have any reports? Madam Clerk.
Our next item is appointment of Board, Commission and Committee members.
I need to, I need a motion to approve one to, one through three, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved as support, are there any exceptions? Here we none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to miscellaneous business, we have one item on the agenda, it's consideration of a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in Mixon versus City of Saginaw per MCL 15.268E.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore. All right, you're in closed session, 7:37.
Motion to return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Chief, can you, can you let them in? I know I would be gone if I was them.
Yeah.
I'd be, oh, their staff. There's a whole bunch of my Bennett Hallway. All the Liberty employees. All right. Who's gonna make the motion?
I'm gonna make the motion and he accept the recommendation. Counsel.
Second. It's been moved as second. We have any more discussion to do, we just going to the vote? We just go to the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bench?
No.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Man, it's wet.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have four yes and three no that motion carries.
There is no other motions to be made, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, you're gonna ask for, if there's any miscellaneous motions?
I thought I did. Is there any more, is there any other miscellaneous things we need to handle? Here we none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as support, all in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Good night, everybody.